This is the January 29th, 2020 meeting of the Christian Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped and we do have a call-in. First item of business is the secretary's report dated January 8th. Anyone have any clarifications or questions about the next? If not, we need a motion.
Motion to accept the secretary's report. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is the financial report. So you all have the financial report as of today. You'll see that we are 59.4% spent out for the fiscal year, which is, I think right there just shows you we're on track with spending, based on the fact that we're at the end of January, so we're seven months through the fiscal year, which is shocking. The salary lines are all as expected in terms of the operating. The energy line, I think we're going to be okay, but I do just want to make you aware that we did get the largest ever source bill of the fiscal year for January, and it was $1,208.79. It is about $300 more than the December bill. And it's a little bit more than last year at this time. Last year's was over $1,000 also, but I think it could be attributed to the fact that the heated walkway is working, and we did have that snow in December. And just to remind you, the heated walkway is on a timer, a 12-hour timer. So if we're turning it on when we leave here at night at 8 o'clock to capture, you know, snow during the night or early in the morning, it's running for that 12-hour time period. So it'll be interesting to see when we get January's bill or for the usage in January, when we get that in February. Because we haven't, I think we've only turned the walkway on once in January, whereas I think we had it on three or four times in December. So it'll just be interesting for a comparison and it'll help determine whether or not that's the, what it's attributing to that. And then also might help us figure out moving forward what to do. I mean, when we did turn it on, we were turning it on at 8 o'clock when we were leaving the building. But, you know, if somebody local who could have a key to the building could come in and say it's 6 o'clock, it might take care of it without us running it all night long in the event of snow.
Is it possible to put it on a timer?
It is on a timer, but it's a 12-hour timer.
Oh, it's a 12-hour.
So if it gets turned on at 8 o'clock when we leave the building, it's not shutting off till 8 o'clock in the morning. And we can turn it on so that it turns on at 8 o'clock and shuts off at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning. We can have it run for six hours, but if the snow is coming, you know, continuing through the night into the morning, and it was only running until 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, that might not help us. So fortunately, we haven't had enough snow this year to really play around with it, so, and it may just stay that way, who knows? But just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
Is it even possible to have a timer that has a time instead of a, you know what I mean, like instead of 12 hours, like?
Yeah, I don't know. This was a production to get the.
No, no.
So I don't, I don't know if there's something that you could say, you know, turn on at 2:00.
Yeah, like your lights.
Right, right. I mean, there could be, but then you also have to factor in the expense of an electrician coming in and wiring that. So, you know, I don't know if it's worth it for the few times of, yeah, I'm sure it is, and anything like that is possible. But, but I don't know, and that's what they, that's what they provide.
Twelve hours is sort of nothing.
So, right, and it's, you know, it is saving on labor and time of someone coming in to do that work. And, you know, it was useful to us in December when we needed it, so.
Good, at least it works.
Right, so we'll see. I think that would be something to figure out, you know.
Roughly what was the difference between this year and last year?
300 or so.
Well, no, it was 300 difference. This year, last year's bill was over $1,000 for January, so I would say it was, it was maybe right around $200 difference from this time last year, when we didn't have a heated walkway. And, I mean, the temperature's set to be the same thing, so I can't imagine, I don't think we're running more in terms of our heating system.
I wouldn't think so, because we have pretty good.
Right.
Temperature this, this year.
Right, so it'll, I'm attributing it to the walkway. And I think when we get January's bill, that'll help us to see if the January, if the bill we get in February that represents January drops, then I think we'll know it was the heated walkway that did it. So just wanted to give you a heads up on that, because it is a, you know, it does show that we're 53% spent out from that line. You know, and other than that, I think everything is normal unless you see something that looks out of line to you for that operating. I mean, the material is, yes, 70% spent out, but we expect that at this time of year. And then hopefully within the next two months, it's 100% spent out, and we're just using State Aid to cover the rest of our materials expenditures. So that's, don't worry about that. Yeah, if you have any questions about it, please, please ask. We're all set? Do we need a motion?
I don't think so.
Okay, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have our paper, okay. Annual 2019 annual report. Okay, so as you know, or as a refresher, the annual report that we're going to be reviewing today is submitted to the town, and that's included in the annual report booklet for the town. It's distributed to residents at town meeting and is available in various locations after town meeting for residents who aren't able to attend the town meeting to pick up and get a sense of what's happening in town departments throughout the year. If you don't read it, it's actually a really cool thing to look at, so, you know, take a look and see. And we have back issues too, so it's sometimes fun to look back at, you know, 10 years back and see, or 50 years back, and see how things have changed throughout the town over the course of time. I'm obviously not going to read out the full report, but I did just want to highlight a few things, especially for people watching who may not ever see the annual report book, just so they have a sense of what's happening here at the library. 2019, sort of our biggest year to date, we added the Friday hours. And in my draft to you, I have that the library saw an average of 100 additional checkouts per week just by being open the four hours on Friday afternoons, but actually worked with the network to get a more accurate number. Average is 133 additional checkouts a week from being just open four hours on Fridays. It's actually kind of interesting, because on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we're open seven hours on those days, Fridays four hours, and we circulate almost as much on Fridays as we do on the seven hours on both Tuesdays and Thursdays. So the Friday hours, I think, you know, when people told us they wanted Friday hours, they meant it, and they've been coming, so that's great to see. You know, we had those two big initiatives launched in late 2018 by the network that definitely had an impact on statistics in 2019 with the mobile app, the ease of using the mobile app, and the automatic renewals for items that are renewable. And I think both of those things contributed to our success in 2019. For the first time ever, we circulated over 100,000 items, circulated a total of 106,000 items, 106,75 items. Last, 2018, it was just around 77,000, so it's a 45% increase in circulation. We circulated over 46,000 children's books. And when I looked back on the report from 2015, that's about the total of items we checked out at Russell in 2014. And that's what we're circulating just in children's books. So that's pretty incredible. We've had an increase in program attendance with over 4,500 children, teens, and adults coming to programs. We've got the brand-new PCs with Windows 10 for the public to use, and the laptops funded by the Friends. We issued 304 new library cards, and we had, you know, a very wide range of programs offered in 2019. As I told you in my email, I highlighted things that were new to the report this year. Just talking about the print subscriptions we own to newspapers, Standard Times, The Advocate, and The Sunday Boston Globe. We see more and more people coming in all the time to read the newspaper here, because they've canceled their own print subscriptions, because the costs keep rising, so people should, you know, definitely know that we have those available for them here. We have over 80 print magazine subscriptions. Digital magazines were added to the Overdrive catalog in 2019, so if you use Overdrive, you can borrow, I think it's 20, maybe 25 titles through Overdrive. We're continuing our early literacy initiatives, especially with that 1,000 bucks before kindergarten program. We have a movie club. Yesterday, the movie club met, and we had the highest attendance so far, which was 11 people. And everyone was shocked, the three regulars were shocked, the staff shocked, that 11 people came for the movie. But I think it's a, it's a great time of year to go for a free movie somewhere. So that was nice to see, you know, that number of people come out for a program that's been going on for a while, but it's taken a while to take off. We're continuing that delivery service for homebound patrons. And the community room is being used more and more by outside groups. A Christian at state rep, Chris Hendricks, uses the room for his office hours monthly. We have four Girl Scout troops currently using the room for their meetings. And the 2019 session of the Council on Aging's Memory Cafe was held almost weekly here. We've got our list of our museum passes, all the wonderful things that friends of the library do for us. I mentioned the new telescope that's through the Friends. We have cookie cutters and cake pans through the Friends. If you're planning to bake some Valentine's cookies, we have heart-shaped cookie cutters. The usual thing, you know, but nothing is new in terms of what I have listed for the state certification for the interlibrary loan program, and nothing changed within the hours of operation. Or much with anything else over there. But, you know, I certainly welcome discussion. I welcome any questions. I welcome any comments regarding changing how this is formatted, or not necessarily how it's formatted, it needs to be formatted a specific way to fit into the booklet, so we can't really change that. But any input at all is, is welcome if you have anything to add, please.
I have a comment.
Okay.
I could not believe you issued 304 new library cards. I thought we kind of like mixed up the town. And now that is unbelievable, Dana. 300 more people are using the library.
It's great. Yeah, we'd like to leave that to be even higher, but it's great, and we hope that new people will continue to come in and get cards. If you haven't had a card in a long time, it's super easy to get one. You just come in with a photo ID. Takes less than five minutes.
That is really impressive.
Oh, good.
Nice job putting this together, Dana.
Thank you. Jen did read it all too before I passed it on to you, so thank you, Jen, for your input.
No problem. My only question is, is that 100 that you changed, did you change it to 133?
Yes, yeah, that is changed to.
So that's the only thing that?
That's the only thing I changed, yeah, to submit. It's, it's due into the town next week, so if you approve it today as is or with any changes you suggest, then it will, the only thing that will be different is that it will say 133 additional checkouts. Anyone else have any comments or anything, changes?
They're really impressive.
I'll say. All right. Got a really good staff here, and, you know, I know that you know that, and I try not to take that for granted, but we have a really talented, hard-working staff. We're very fortunate that we have people who are passionate about what they do. Fortunate that we have, we've, you know, found two retired librarians who, you know, needed some part-time work or wanted some part-time work and found themselves here. And we're fortunate that we have two recent library school graduates who hopefully stay on for a little while in these part-time positions.
It's a tough part.
It is a tough part. My fear is, and we're in the budget season, I think it's okay to mention this. My fear all the time is that they're both going to come to me on the same day and say, hey, we got full-time jobs. Now that, you know, we have our master's degrees and we found full-time jobs elsewhere. And fortunately, we just don't have a budget right now that allows for more than two full-time positions. And, you know, with any luck, someday that'll change, but maybe they'll still be here by some miracle. But, you know, we're fortunate that we've been able to recruit talented people who really care about what they're doing. They do provide really good service. They all have interesting ideas. They're all on board. When I have, you know, a wacky idea, they're on board with it. So we're fortunate that we've, we've got the staff that we have. And I think, you know, they receive a lot of the credit for what goes into this report that makes the library.
I think what I find, they are so helpful, you know? They never act like you're disturbing them if you have to ask a question or get some help with a computer. They're just super, as far as offering to help and making everybody feel comfortable here.
Yeah. Yeah, we hear that a lot, which is great. As, you know, as the boss, that's wonderful for me to hear, so, so thank you for that. If we're all set, we need a motion.
Make a motion to accept Dana's report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Building updates.
Okay, so here we go. At the meeting on January 8th, you approved the quote from Air Masters to replace the Jace controller. They came yesterday, January 28th, to do that work, and now we wait and see if this works. So far, so good. Didn't involve too much training, and the system is almost identical to what we were using before in terms of what we need to do to turn the system on and off and change the temperature, all that. So we'll see. Hopefully, at our next meeting, we can discuss that maintenance contract that they had proposed, the annual contract, and have a few more answers to questions that we had about that contract, and perhaps find out if we have any other options of turning to someone else to use that. But I wanted you to know that it is installed. They were here for about, we got here at 8:00 AM, and they were here for about four hours. It went smoothly. Hopefully, we're all good on the HVAC. So I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the septic system, my annual septic system, and talk with you. On Thursday, the 16th of January, I was just getting ready to leave, went into the ladies' room and went, oh, I guess I'm not leaving yet, because all three toilets were actually, the water was coming out of them. Unfortunately, no one had let us know that, so let me use this opportunity to say, if you're ever in a public restroom in a public building and the toilet's, you know, done, you don't have to take credit for what happened. You can just come and say, hey, I just saw what happened. And do you know what happened in there? Because the staff will really appreciate that you let us know, because we had a lot of people in and out of there, and no one had mentioned anything. So anyway, on 17th of January, Mr. Sesspool came to pump out the septic tank. They hadn't been here since January 2019, so we did go a year without that needing any work. And all seemed fine again until Wednesday, January 22nd, when a wonderful, lovely human came to the desk to let us know that the women's room toilets were all clogged. So we thanked her multiple times for letting us know that there was an issue in the bathroom. Fortunately, that was during a program where we had, we were at capacity in this room during an author visit, which was very exciting to have the room so full and people so engaged. We had to turn people away because we didn't have enough room in here, and then I find out there's an issue with the bathroom. But fortunately, only two people needed to make a pit stop before going home. So we have a system where we lock the women's room door, and we lock the men's room door, and we make it that you have to come to the, we turn the men's room into a unisex bathroom, and so we still had a bathroom for people to use. So on the following day, on the 23rd, the DPW tried to remove the clog for us using the clean-out that they put in back in 2018. Their equipment was not powerful enough after many, many attempts. So Bass Ready Ruder was called in, and they needed to come in two days, because that's how bad the clog was. And they ended up clearing the pipes last Friday, 24th, and we've been fine since then, not gone. So just so you're aware, $280 was what we paid to Mr. Sesspool for the work of emptying the tank. And I took that out of the building and grounds line, because we're only about half-spent out of that line, and that's a perfect use of building and grounds money. So I took that $280 out of the building and grounds. And Bass Ready Ruder, the total for that, for the two days of work, was $900. So I had to take that from the stock gift fund, because if I took it out of building and grounds, we would have very little left for the rest of the fiscal year. So for moving forward, the Board of Health, DPW, Building Commissioner, Jim Garrett, they're all, they've all been involved in this and all been talking about it. And the recommendation is that we should be on a maintenance schedule with Mr. Sesspool, meaning that we should have him come back in six months, and then possibly in another six months. So instead of having it emptied or pumped manually, annually, we would have it pumped twice a year. And as Jim pointed out, you know, they might come in six months and say, we don't need to come back in another six months. We can come back in another year. But just so we don't get to the point where we're needing to call in a Ready Ruder-type company to, to clean out the pipes. We do have money in the stock gift fund to cover this. That's what the money in the stock gift fund is for, is to take care of this building. And the other fan alert is we're probably two years out from being tied to the town sewer lines. They won't make their way over here for probably another two years. So if, even if we had to have the septic pumped twice a year, that's $1,200 versus having to pay $900 to a Ready Ruder-type company to come, plus pay out money for the septic to be pumped. So, you know, if you're all okay with that, you know, we don't, you don't need an official motion, but if you're okay with just moving forward with getting on a six-month.
Question.
Yeah?
You backed up, you had it pumped, and we're going to back up again?
No, it was still, there was still a clog in the pipes, and we hadn't had, in the past, we've had Ready Ruder come before and clean out the pipes, and then we had it pumped. In this case, the recommendation was just call, you know, just let's have them pump the tank. It hasn't been pumped in a year. Let's have them pump the tank. And it was fine for a couple of days, but the clog was so bad, they needed to use jets from two different angles at the same time to break up the clog, and it was hard to get, they even, you know, they had cameras down in the pipes, and it was probably just toilet paper altogether.
Once it's done.
So that's what, so the tank would have needed to be pumped anyway, but it just happened that the pipes hadn't been cleared correctly. So I guess there was enough room in the holding tank, so we didn't notice it for a few days until it tried to get into the.
Makes sense if we're using the building. We've got more people in here.
Right.
We should pump it more often.
Right. And we're going to continue with using Brit-X, which we do once a month anyway. Are you all okay?
Where was the clog?
Under the driveway, like in, like in the middle of the driveway, in the, in the pipes, like right smack dab in the middle.
How come you could use the men's room?
That's on a different line. It sort of intersects at some point, but it was before, it was, the men's room ties in after that, where the blockage was, ties into the septic, so that's why we were able. They, they did say that eventually we probably wouldn't have been able to use the men's room. And there, it was taking a little bit, like the sound of the flush was a little bit different than what it normally sounds like, which I only know because sometimes I need to flush it when I'm leaving, because we're leaving at the end of the day, and we check the bathrooms and someone hasn't flushed, so I know what the sounds, you know, what it sounds like when you flush it. So they, they were saying that eventually probably would have ended up backing up that as well. So that's the update on that.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Okay. Never thought I'd be talking so much about.
Septic system.
We don't have any choice. A lot of people spend a lot of money.
Right, right.
No sense in doing it.
Right.
If you only, two years.
Right, so hopefully, two years from now, you know, what we're doing to, for maintenance will be enough to get us through the two years, and Board of Health thinks it's enough, and DPW says yes, so fingers crossed. So that's it for building updates?
Oh, okay, okay, all right.
That's enough. I wasn't sure.
No. Okay, your attendance at the Public Library Association Conference?
Yeah, so back at the August 28th meeting, which seems like a lifetime ago, you all approved me going to the Public Library Association Conference, which is in February. So I did get the early bird registration. That was $305, and I paid for that using State Aid. I booked my flight to Nashville, and that's $202.80, and I did take that out of the travel line. So when you look at the, you know, you'll notice we're about halfway spent out, and that's just from mileage to meetings, and then $202 from the flight. I booked the hotel, which I will use State Aid for. I'll be there for four nights. Conference is four days, so I'll be there for four nights. And back at that meeting, you had approved $2,000 to cover the cost of the conference, and I'm well below the $2,000 with all that booked, so I don't anticipate asking you for a Nashville.
Nashville.
Nashville. So I will be there February 25th through the 29th, and the staff knows they can't get sick in that week, so. All should be fine here, and I'll hopefully be getting a lot of good info down there at my first national conference. So I do thank you all again for supporting my attendance.
When are you going to be there?
I don't know, but I'll, you'll be my first phone call, it's, it should be interesting. We did get Overdrive, who does a lot of the, you know, digital material, as you know. They're like the largest vendor of digital material. They're hosting like a line dance event where you can, like, after hours of the conference, and, you know, someone else I know that's going says, we have to go to this. I was like, do we have to go? But I guess if you're in Nashville, you need to go somewhere where there's some line dancing, so it'd be an interesting networking and line dancing opportunity. So that, just wanted to let you know that was actually happening, since we hadn't talked about it since back in August. Should be fun. Yeah, I think so, and I look forward to it. Yeah, we got, you know, they've got a really neat app that, you know, where everything is listed and all the times, and there's some really outstanding speakers and some really interesting, looks like discussion sessions, where I'll be able to, you know, pick up some good info hopefully to bring back here for programs. And awesome opportunity to meet with all of the vendors that we currently use, plus, you know, vendors that we don't use, that, you know, may be new opportunities for us going forward. So I think there's something, it's some crazy number of vendors, like, I don't know, too many to see in four days probably, so it'll be great.
Cool.
Yeah, thank you. All right, and that's it.
You have in the new business, I think.
Yep.
Do you have a director's report?
So I don't have an official report, since we just met back on January 8th, but I did want to give you an updated budget, just because tonight is the finance committee meeting for the library. And I just wanted to make you aware, as you know, we had discussed. And I just wanted to make you aware, as you know, we had discussed back in, I guess that was December, maybe late November, that we had discussed the budget for FY '21. And at that time, we had talked about a $2,000 overage in the library text line to cover things like paid holidays, sick time, vacation time, staff meetings. When I played around with the numbers a little bit more, I really determined that $2,000 would not be enough. And I, that really became a realization to me after the Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year's holidays. So I spoke with Town Administrator Hebert, our new Town Administrator, back in late December about increasing that line by $1,000. So I just, and she totally understood and supports my wanting to present that to the Finance Committee tonight. So I just wanted to make you aware that it's for $1,000 more than it had been. Just so if you have, if you are coming to the meeting tonight and you have a copy of the budget that you approved, it's for $1,000 more than what you had approved. And I didn't think you'd mind if we were doing that. It's not taking $1,000 away. But there is that slight increase there. Nothing else was touched, just that $1,000 in the library text line. And I think then we'll be, all should be well with that money.
What time should we be there?
So the meeting is at 7:00 o'clock, and I did receive notice that worked it from the agenda. And they expect based off estimated times given by the other people presenting that the library should be presenting at 7:45, possibly 8:00. So I will be there for 7:00. If you're coming and you would like to wait a little while, you know, just keep in mind that when you enter the selectman's office from that back door, the outside door, you know, just, it's being filmed live. So, you know, just make sure that door closes quietly as you come in, which it normally does. But just a heads up, you know, in case someone is in the middle of presenting if you come in after 7:00. That's for tonight. And then the only other things I want to say. We do support the Boston Bruins Annual Pajama Drive. They've been doing that for years. We've been supporting it now, I think this is the fourth year that we're supporting it. So from now until March 14th, you can bring in any new pajamas for kids.
New?
New pajamas, gotta be new. And then we, you know, the state knows we're, it's a mass library system program. So they know that we're participating because we've registered with them. And they will send someone as usual to come pick up the pajamas. And then they are distributed locally, so they don't go to the Boston area and get left there. They are distributed down in this area through Cradles for Crayons, which is an organization tied to DCF. So anyone who would like to come in and donate pajamas, please do new kids' pajamas. And that's through March 14th. We're doing three, excuse me, four pajama storytimes to tie into promoting the event. And those are all on our website, acupl.org. The first one is Thursday, tomorrow, January 30th. And there's another one on Saturday morning, this Saturday morning, February 1st at 10:00 AM. We're mixing it up a little and doing a morning pajama storytime. And I said before that the staff supports my wacky ideas. On the days that we're doing pajama storytimes, all of the staff will be wearing their pajamas to work to promote the pajama drive. So if you'd like to see us in our pajamas, which may just be sweatpants and a sweatshirt, please feel free to come in. We do have permission from the town to do this. But please feel free to stop in on those days and donate pajamas. And I thank the staff for supporting that wacky idea. And finally, two programs I just want to mention real quick. Wednesday, February 5th, Tim Weisberg, who is a local writer, will be here to present his Presidential Paranormal Program. And that is at 6:30 PM in the community room.
February 5th.
Wednesday, February 5th.
Next week.
Our paranormal programs are normally quite popular, so I imagine this one will be too. So, you know, space is limited. We had to turn people away last week, like I said. So please arrive early if you're interested. And we thank the Friends of the Library for supporting this wonderful sounding evening. And on Wednesday, February 26th at 6:30, I have to pull up the name because I haven't, it's a movie screening. The movie is called Stefano. I just want to get this right. The Acushnet Cultural Council, we didn't apply for the grant, but the Acushnet Cultural Council approved a grant by the filmmaker to show the movie here. So we thank the Acushnet Cultural Council for supporting programs held at the library. But it is, it's Stefano, The True Story of Shakespeare's Shipwreck. And it's published or produced through a company called Hit and Run History. And it's a screening and question and answer with the filmmaker. And it follows the story of the only Mayflower passenger who had been to North America previously. A decade before being on the Mayflower, Stephen Hopkins had been aboard a Jamestown-bound ship that wrecked on Bermuda, inspiring Shakespeare's final play, The Tempest. The movie was shot on location in England, Bermuda, Virginia, and in New England. And it retraces Hopkins' life crisscrossing the Atlantic. The person who's made the movie is a two-time Emmy-nominated producer. So I think it'll be a really, it's a different night, a different kind of program. And again, it has been supported by the Acushnet Cultural Council. And so it's, as all of our programs are, it's free of charge. And we hope to have a great turnout for that as well. But that's at 6:30, February 26th. And aside for that, all of our events are on acupl.org. I went seven minutes over the promised topic, so thank you. Oh, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, I just looked up and saw Nancy, the Friends of the Library have been working so hard on an annual fundraiser, a calendar raffle. And the sale of the calendar for March of 2020 begins this Saturday, February 1st. Calendars are on sale for $10, and it's a fundraising raffle calendar. Each prize on the calendar has been donated. There are 22 prizes. So people who buy the calendar have the opportunity to win all 22 prizes because your name, if it's pulled on March 1st, or whatever the first weekday is in March, it will be added back and could possibly be drawn again the next day. So the Friends work really hard on this. Nancy works really hard on it every year. And we'll be selling those at the library and through the Friends as of February 1st. I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that.
Town Hall. Excuse me, is Town Hall selling? Are they selling at Town Hall? Don't know.
Okay, I don't think there's.
You start drawing March?
Yes, they will start to draw in March. We'll sell out the whole month of February.
Yes, yeah. So people can stop in. There'll be, I guess the first drawing day will be March 2nd. That's the first weekday in March. But 22 chances to win some pretty awesome prizes. So, and all the money raised comes right back to fund library programs. That's, everything that the Friends do supports library programs and services. So it's a neat fundraiser. Thank you for doing it. And now that's really it. Aside from, next week.
Yes, do you want to set the next meeting date?
Yes. Do you have any? Well, since you committed to me twice in January, I was thinking maybe like February off. And I'm gone for one week anyway. So my first request is perhaps Wednesday, March 11th at 4:30? Unless something crazy happens and I need to call in for that, you can't do that day.
Okay.
Can't do that?
Is there another day in that week? Just March 4th would be, I think, too early for me to get. Just looking at the calendar. I can't do Tuesday, but I can do Thursday or Monday. Let's see, good. So could other people do Thursday, March 12th at 4:30?
I believe so, yes.
Is this room available?
Yes, that's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'm checking right now. It's actually.
Thursday, March 12th. Does that work for you?
Yeah.
That's good. Diane, does that work for you?
Mm-hmm.
Very?
Yep.
Okay. So Thursday, March 12th at 4:30?
4:30, great. And that's actually the final pajama storytime night to support. So that's at 6:30. So if you want to come in your pajamas and advertise the program, haha. Just kidding.
No takes.
All right. We'll see. We may surprise you.
Yeah, I'd love that.
Thank you. Thursday, we're mixing it up.
Will you be in your pajamas?
I presented to the Finance Committee two years ago in my pajamas, so I think we know the answer to that. Yeah.
I think you always take the opportunity to come to work in your pajamas.
Somebody says.
Do that.
All right, we have no other business. We need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This January 29th, 2020, meeting of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees is officially adjourned. The time is 5:12.